There are still some senior citizens that did the online survey.
Online.
Yeah, so I think there were only three papers that were not included. It was because it's after the closing date.
Sure.
But the intent, and we mentioned it in our last meeting, the intent was to use that information moving forward. So it's not a ridiculous thing anyway.
This is a beautiful document. Who, is this from Old Colony? I mean, is that, do they pull it?
We, we did a lot of tweaking.
Sure.
But they did, they provided the data and the tables. We kind of set up the format and went through the goals and strategies in particular is what we brought to this and the survey.
I look forward to reading it.
Yeah, this looks like a great document, great first step. I love the fact that you guys were working on housing to fit Plimpton. Tons more work to do, years more work, but great first step. Very appreciative that you two are involved. Hope you can stay involved.
Isn't that part of the great?
Forever.
Well, and we talked about that too, how that will be kind of fluid because this is going to be a long-term commitment. And people won't necessarily be able to do this, you know, over years and years, but, you know, that we would try to do what we can to stay involved and as, as things change, that they both were very interested in seeing this through its course of, or go in the, go in the distance with us.
Great, really great.
Thank you.
So we might, John and I might digest this and Elizabeth, and then maybe we have another meeting with questions to discussion in a few weeks?
Yeah, absolutely. We need to have this done by the end of this year. Planning Board has the plan as well, so they were going to review it. And I think they've got a meeting posted the 15th, and they were going to have any comments back to us by then. So what we can do is we can talk about it, and then I can bring it back to the committee. I'm sure, you know, anything that you guys recommend is going to be fine, and we'll just make the changes.
So we will actually vote approval before the first of the year?
Yes, we need to vote approval by the end of this year so that we can get it, so Old Colony Planning Council can get it into Department of Housing and Community Development before the end of the year.
Otherwise, this town would have to do that, just, you know, it would be a time-consuming problem.
Right, right. They know what they're doing, and we, in order to, to have them help us, we need to have this done by the end of the year.
So maybe could we have it on the agenda each week, just in case questions come up for at least the next couple of weeks? If there are no questions, we'll just skip over it, but that'll remind us to get to work on it.
You have three meetings.
Right, we've got three meetings.
Four, 11, and 18. And you said, planning is meeting?
Planning, I believe, is meeting the 15th, is what Deb said, but I can confirm with her. What day of the week is that? December 15?
That's a Friday.
No, that's not it then. I'll confirm with Deb, because she, they're going to, they were going to post a meeting in December to talk about, review the plan, and make any recommendations that, that they had for us.
Do you want me to call her?
Could you? And just check the date? That'd be perfect.
So we'd be aiming to vote by the 18th?
Yes, that would be ideal.
So that's three weeks from now.
Okay. All right.
Will it be available on the website for people to review?
We could get a draft. I've got it, I've got it. I can put it on a draft.
And then if you do that, I just would caution you to remind folks that it is just the first plan, like it's a requirement, and it will change over time. I don't think there's anything wrong with it, but any little bits, you know.
I don't want, particularly on there until we've had a chance to reveal it.
Well, and I think it might be confusing to people if they have, you know, see the draft and not the final document.
Yeah.
But, you know, we, we can have a-
We're only talking three or four weeks.
Yeah, it's only three or four weeks.
Yeah. And then we can put it out.
Yeah, then we can put it on.
And I'm sure if there's any residents that have questions, they can contact any of the Plimpton Housing Production Plan Committee members, and we'd be more than happy to answer questions that anybody has.
Or this board, too. So, yeah, very good. All right. Did you guys get a chance to read the minutes?
Yeah, yes.
All right, all right. Do you want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I made a motion to approve the minutes, reading on Wednesday, November 15, 2017.
Okay, all right, all right. I'll say, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, all right, all right. Make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you guys very much.
So do you want this on the agenda for the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, why don't we have the Housing Production Plan on the agenda?
Do you want them, do you want Sharon to come?
No, no, they don't need to. They've got a lot going on. This was the only date we really had that everybody could be here, so. Thank you ladies so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Bye. Yes, Merry Christmas. All right. All right, so at 7:00, we've got the Board of Assessors for the Tax Classification Hearing, Updates and Discussion, Town Administrator Welcome and Introduction, set up a meet and greet date. So welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Do you, as the introduction, do you want Elizabeth to say something about her background or is this, or do you want to just?
I think if she feels like talking, she'll talk.
It's up to you, Elizabeth.
Sure, thank you for having me. I'm very grateful for the opportunity, and as I've mentioned to each of you prior, I feel like this is going to be a good fit, and it closely aligns with my background, both professionally and personally, as far as being from a small town in southeastern Mass. So I'm very excited to be here.
Excellent.
We're excited to have you.
We certainly are.
Could I add that?
Oh, sure. So meet and greet date. What, what were you thinking? Was this, this was going to be a night, right?
We thought, maybe after an abbreviated selectmen's meeting. So we have our meeting 6 to 7. 7 o'clock, we opened it up, put something on the website, get it in the paper, you know. Please join us for some coffee and-
So how about the 11th, which is two weeks from now? The last meeting probably be a last me, 18th would be a meeting that we have a lot to do.
Right.
That gives us three weeks and gives Elizabeth a chance to settle in.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right. So do you want to set it up for 7 or 7:15 on the 11th? So that way we can meet from?
You're looking to be, we're-
Yeah, I'm looking at, well, both of you. So we can meet until?
Yeah.
7, 7:15? We'll try to be done at 7:00, and if we go run a little bit late?
I put 7:15.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, we have to get Barbara to make cookies.
Okay.
We have things to do.
All right. So do you want to work with the press and let them know?
Sure.
You can do a little press release and?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. Get something on the website?
You and I will do that.
Perfect.
We'll sit down tomorrow.
Okay. All right, sounds good. All right, electrical aggregation, next steps.
So we received a whole bunch of literature today, mainly stuff to post on the website, to post on the walls. There will be a letter going out to everyone sometime later this week. They are doing the press release apparently and getting that to the newspaper. I will check in tomorrow and just make absolutely sure that's the case. This thing sounds very complicated, but from the consumer's perspective, it's really pretty easy. If they haven't signed with another supplier, it's simply, they have to do nothing. And what will come out of it is the next six months, about a 10% reduction in the prevailing rate. I guess the only question was, is the Colonial asked whether we wanted to do a, a public session, a Q and A. You know, my first reaction was yes. My second reaction is that we might be flooding people with too much information, that the thing that she sent today, which is a frequently asked questions thing, is very, very clear. I mean, it's three pages long, but it's very clear for people that have questions. The one pager is even easier. I mean, it simply states the facts and describes it as an opt-out option if people wanted it or if they're trying to opt-in, having made other commitments, the phone numbers to call. So I'm kind of leaning toward the simpler, the better. If we get it in the newspaper, if we get it up on the website, John will probably be much more interested in, you know.
Yeah, I lean the other way.
Okay.
Just because people don't read anymore, you know? They've got so many things going on, they're reading tons of stuff.
And I'm, I'm fine with that. I, what I, I wasn't clear if we'd go that route on the format, whether we invite them in to do a presentation, and then people could find it within a Board of Selectmen meeting.
I would think that would be a good way. We could always reference in the newspaper article, you know, for more information, either the website or the cable video.
Okay, so I will contact her and see if she can come in in the next couple of weeks and-
Doesn't have to be long.
Give a, I think this is one, I mean, if you start diving into the minutia, it very quickly sounds incredibly complicated, and the last thing we want to do, this is our first electric aggregation, so citizens aren't aware of this yet.
So we've got to tell her to make it, you know, consume-oriented. We don't have to get into all the trivia behind it.
No, no.
So I'll contact her tomorrow. It sounded like there was just a, a couple of finishing touches on the letter that was going out, but as soon as she lets us know that that's happened, I'll make sure this gets up on the town website and gets into the paper. And we'll see if we can-
It's a no-brainer. I mean, if you don't like it, you stay where you are.
Yeah. The interesting little piece, I did the math today, to opt into the 100% renewable rather than 20% renewable is about a half of 1% increase. On a $300 bill, I think it might be a dollar more.
Over today's.
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
Interesting.
So I, that's a nice option. The basic, the basic rate with the aggregators is 20% renewable. The other one is 100% renewable for maybe a buck or so on the average bill.
Okay.
Maybe that adds more complication than needed, but this is a great program. I, no downside, save money.
Yeah. Will they feedback information after this is all done? You know, how many people elected what rate structure?
I don't know, but I suspect they will. I mean, this is going to be an ongoing relationship because every six months or so, we have to decide again what new rates to sign in for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good.
And I'm sure, who is it that you're going to be speaking with?
Denise from Colonial. Denise, I think it's Denise Allard.
Yeah.
Yeah, A-L-L-A-R-D.
Perfect. Okay, Green Community Application. So I asked last week Bob to work with Karen to get us the information-
Karen, who?
Down plant, building, to get us the-
Kathy?
Kathy, I'm sorry, Kathy, that we needed for the number of permits and, and that. So they're working on that. I asked them to have it to us by the end of this week.
Okay.
So I will remind them that, that we need that. Then Bree was looking for information to help with the, kind of the summary of how we've saved money by implementing this, the Green Communities Initiative. And I don't think you found what you were hoping to find.
Okay.
I did get, it just so happened it hit at the right time for every EverSource bill. So I have, I copied all of them, which will show what we've used each month.
Oh, nice.
And I filed a report in Dale's office of who we dealt with before, and I don't know what he's done with the spreadsheet that was given to him.
Well, it's somewhere in his computer.
It's somewhere in his computer.
We'll have to go take a look.
Do we have it back?
And this was just recent, it was, I did this for him in June, like July.
Okay.
So we can sort by date and start there.
Okay.
I just have to see what he, obviously, he must have sent it to somebody, so I'm thinking it's in his, and he didn't see me. I originally had given him a report of just, they wanted the larger accounts.
Okay.
Then they came back and they said, no, we want every EverSource bill.
Okay.
So I went through all of the EverSource, and we put them by account number.
Would Barbara have been involved in that?
No.
No, okay.
Christine did it.
All right.
Because it's not like I copy every single bill that we get.
Right.
I have the warrants. So this time it just happened to hit right, so I copied all of the bills that were attached to that warrant. And then I had to get a report from Christine, and I had to do the breakdown of all the account numbers, and it wasn't easy. And I, so I read the numbers to her, and she was helping me and plugged them all in as we were going.
Okay.
And that report was given to Dale.
We're working on doing the Green Communities report, the annual report. It was actually due several years ago, and this year they said, you have to get this done by, I think, December 11th. We have to have the report submitted. Otherwise, we're not going to be eligible for any more Green Community grant money.
Okay, he does have a folder in the office that I found that says Green Communities, so I can look through that, and I can also-
Okay.
John helped me get that email account up and running, so we should be able to search also in his folders.
Perfect.
We'll try to find that.
Take a look tomorrow.
Terrific.
It says that I pulled off the ad, and it was in my writing, EverSource copies for Dale.
Okay.
Here's the best.
Okay.
And there's some technical numbers on it, too.
I put in a call to Seth Pickering, but the holiday, I haven't heard a thing, so tomorrow I'll follow it and see if we can get the narrative that was submitted previously.
Okay. Yeah, and we're going to need the, I think some of the, a table from the grant, I think it was called Table 9, that we'll have to submit with this. Table 4, we have a hard copy of that, but I couldn't find Table 9.
I'll see if he has it.
Yeah, I'd see if we can get a, a electronic copy of the whole application.
Of everything that was sent.
Exactly, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And then, we already have the vehicle list, right?
Yeah, just as a tool.
Okay. All right.
We can figure that out, too.
Yeah, why don't we get the, the list that we got from Lori to Elizabeth, and she can help us gather the information so that we can-
I'll forward that whole thing.
Perfect.
The whole email.
That whole email? Okay. Terrific.
So your email's working, right?
Um, I, I'm not sure yet. I received an email from Michael shortly before the meeting tonight, but then when we exchanged back and forth, I wasn't sure if I should wait to see about setting it up on the laptop, or also if he's going to create a separate username for the desktop.
I assume it's going to be one name, Town Admin.
Okay.
I sent you a-
Dale had it set up both.
Yeah.
So it looked like the network was under one-
It's not a good reference.
And then, and then the email was Town Coordinator, so I just didn't want to create any unnecessary work for anybody if I went and logged in, but he did send me the login info.
Perfect.
So it's going to be Town Administrator?
It's going to be Town Admin.
Admin.
At town-plimpton.m a.
Town Admin.
Okay.
Town Admin.
Have to try it tomorrow.
I sent you a-
A welcome.
I forwarded you a, actually, it was more, you know, something you're going to have to dive into.
If it wasn't bounced back, though, that's a good sign.
It wasn't just a hello.
Yeah, I know. As an FYI.
Your first assignment. Oh, very good. All right, so hopefully you're up and running and-
Yes.
Okay. So you'll email Elizabeth all of the, the Green Community stuff we've gotten from Lori?
Yeah.
Perfect. Great, so we should be able to get this thing. And, you know, we'll just get it done to the best hour of our ability.
Which is, which is wonderful.
With the limited amount of information we've got, we will get it done.
Yep.
All right, so fire an EMS consultant MRI.
So there is a note that I think you may have seen, that Brewster came in and said that if they were to do the service, it would cost $750,000.
Wow.
And that assumes that they keep the revenue, too, I'm sure, so.
Which is surprisingly similar, I think, to the number from five years ago. I think we're pretty much the exact same number when, when that discussion came up.
Yeah, when Dylan Law was here, I had got a ballpark that they said they wouldn't honor or anything, but it was 450 plus revenue. So I'm not sure, but in any case, 750 is out of them.
It's a lot of money.
But it's part of the analysis.
Well, there it is. It's an important part of the analysis.
I also saw a note where Warren has supplied to the two consultants a list of everybody for the year since it started, of who worked, what shifts for how long. So I think that's good information that will be put through the, you know, their cycle as they take a look. And we'll see what comes out the other end.
Okay. All right. Anything else to add to that?
Mm-mm.
Okay. All right, outdoor recreation plan. I still have not had a chance to contact the, the woman, but I do have her information from Pat from Old Colony Planning Council, so I'll reach out to her and just find out what type of grants are available now, and if there's any deadlines, just, you know, as much as information as I can get, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah.
So I'll try to have that for next week.
You're going to go to Old Colony, you said?
I, I got the information. Well, they came, this woman came to an Old Colony Planning Council meeting and talked about the, the state's open space and recreation plan, and I could not find the documents that I got there, so I had to reach out to him for her contact information.
Indeed.
I can't remember any.
And why are we doing this? Because of the grant issue?
Just to see what type of money was available.
Oh, okay.
Because this was for all sorts of, you know, fall fields and walking trails, any outdoor type of recreation. I'll get you her name, Bree, for the minutes. All right. So next is Old Townhouse renovation, responsibility of the town versus Plimpton Historical Society follow-up from 11/21 meeting.
I think we talked about this last time, so it's-
We did.
Yeah. Basically, we're waiting for the next meeting. There's a couple of things going on, trying to get more information before that CPC.
And I think we had a real good CPC meeting last week and moved substantially toward consensus on what projects to do first. I am trying again to light a fire under the historical circuit rider to get him in. I have a bunch of questions into Community Preservation Coalition. There was this discussion of moving the project application from the Historical Society, presumably to Board of Selectmen, and I just want to make sure that's doable, and I just, and I want to make sure that there's no administrative tension with me being on the Board of Selectmen and being Chair of CPC at the same time. But I, I think we're making some progress, and it's this typical slow moving forward. I guess probably in our parking lot is rewriting the lease at some point, just so we better understand.
Yeah. I'm going to ask Steve Sorrow, our custodian, to go out and take a look at the building and get an idea of exactly what we should be thinking about.
I mean, maybe that makes sense as we get to budget time, because maybe the budget line for buildings is going to have to include that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Did the wash get put on?
No, that's my fault. I haven't, I haven't ordered it.
That's the woman's name from, all right. Assistant Assessor position. We continuing to get resumes?
I have not gotten any more.
So we have three, and they are all to the Board of Assessors.
How many total?
They've all been sent.
Six?
Three.
Three. No, because the three that we all, that we saw.
The three that we saw already.
And we did change something. This is put as Principal Assessor. We don't have a Principal.
No, it's got to be Assistant Assessor.
So when she wrote the job description, she put Principal.
Okay.
We changed the website to now say Assistant Assessor. The link that says Assistant, it's all changed.
Okay.
So it will be-
But the duties are all the same, it's just the title's different, right?
I believe, I just, I think it could be something with possibly a different pay even scale. I don't know.
No.
I don't know any of that, so.
She hated the title from day one, and, you know, if you go into a lot of the towns, it's Assistant. The idea being that the board is actually responsible, carries the responsibility for assessing, but our bylaw says Assistant.
Okay.
It's been mentioned and brought, and we've got to change it the best way we could.
Would you check the website, Bree? I understand that the Town Administrator's position is still on there, is, you know, Town of Plimpton looking for Town Administrator.
Oh, really?
Yeah, if it is, just, we get it off.
Okay, yeah, should be off.
Okay.
I thought we were on there today.
All right, and then we were going to be accepting application as long as that ad is running in, what, MOA?
MMA, I believe, isn't it? Oh, no, maybe MAA.
MAA, yeah.
MAA, Massachusetts Association of Assessors?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our Assessors Association.
Okay.
I, there was some questions. I know that they're coming in tonight, so it's probably too late for that.
Okay. All right, if that any-
If someone was going to come in temporarily until-
Yeah, wait until they come in.
Yeah, while we wait. Okay. All right. Townhouse hours for Monday nights.
Everybody likes 5:00.
Okay.
They think also that we'd get more foot traffic. It makes a lot of sense for them to drive by. Not one department, they said, it dies in here after 7:00. There's nobody.
Okay.
I told them it didn't affect their meetings, if they wanted to hold a meeting. That could change, and anytime that didn't affect that, but it would just be really the, basically clerk's office, treasurer, collector's office, building. Do they think it did all?
Makes sense.
Well, as long as everybody is doing it, because I think if they weren't, it would be confusing for residents, but if everybody likes it and everybody wants to do the 5 to 7?
I went to the assessors, I hit every department.
Okay. Who do you think?
Downstairs is okay.
Downstairs.
I want to stay out of trouble. No, I think it's worth a try, and just, we'll see what happens. I, I'm sure it'll be fine. I think it's a matter of just getting the word out.
So-
And I, I think we just make clear that this is really for the convenience of the consumers, not the other way around.
No, everybody thinks that they'll have more traffic with people coming home. Once people get home, they don't want to come back out.[1629.70] Once people get home, they don't want to come back out. So, when we tell them, oh, well, you can come in at six, they'd rather drop it in the drop box or the...
Yeah, it's definitely worth a try.
Yeah.
So, when are we going to start?
The 18th.
Of December?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, starting that week.
So, it would start December 18th, so we'll still have the 4th and the 11th. I didn't know if the 11th was too soon.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that way you can get it in the paper.
Give it two weeks to get it into the, into the paper to change.
Jim, you're going to pick up that, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And we could start on the 18th and then we'll be off for the next two Mondays. So, it'll be the first day of it and then off, and then back on.
So, we should put something, a big posting on the door?
Yeah. It'll, "Plumpton Helping Plumpton," onto the website, on the door. I will send out to the distribution list.
Perfect.
Great.
Can you go door to door? Knock on doors and just...
That's a lot.
When's the next tax bill going out?
That's a discussion with the assessors.
Hello, yeah.
The recap sheet has to, well, when they come in, the recap sheet has to be done no later than 12:15. The tax bills are due, would go out February 1st. If we, if we miss that date, then the tax bills won't go out till later. Then it'll be complete confusion.
All right, so we need to make the date. But I was asking because I thought maybe we could put a little flyer in with the tax bill about that townhouse is five to seven.
Yeah, be February 1st.
Okay. It's a little late.
But we could, before the tax bill goes out, we should sit down and think what we want to go with it. Because you're right, everybody gets it. We ought to piggyback it and have...
Yeah, it's an opportunity for free mailing.
Yeah, exactly.
And not a free mailing, but we're paying for it anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I don't know if there'll be time, but, you know, we had talked about a list of accomplishments and things we were working on.
I don't want to put that with the tax bill.
All the more with the tax bill. This is...
Your tax dollars at work!
Yeah. Guess not.
I think it's a neat idea. All right, so we're going to start the Monday nights, five to seven, on the 18th and give it a try and, and see how it works out. Okay. And everybody is doing it, so we'll work to promote that and so that everyone knows.
What time will we do our meetings?
We'll still do it at six.
You just don't want six? Did you want to change to 5:30?
5:30 is, is tough for me. I can do it in, you know, push come to shove if I, if we have to, but on a regular, on a regular basis, I couldn't do 5:30.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll stay with six.
I am, just, that brings up another thing. Took a look at the Finance Committee last, take part of it, and they're asking, you know, they're trying to figure out their schedule for the whole budget cycle. And one of the issues is they meet on Monday, we meet on Monday. We'd like Elizabeth to join them for the budget process. So, their question is, do they want to change their potential date, I assume, to Tuesday? But I think that's an open discussion for us, too. So, as we go forward, we need to think that out. We'll be meeting with them pretty soon, I assume, at one point, just to talk about the process, who's going to do what, et cetera.
Yeah, hopefully, surely, within the next month, that'd be good.
Yeah, yeah. I think they were drafting up a, a draft budget schedule and letter.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we'll figure it out between us, but there's probably going to be some sort of, somebody's going to have to move a little.
Oh, you know, I read Town Accountant Contract is Town Assistant Assessor. I missed it.
I wondered why you jumped in.
Yeah, I did not mean to jump that. So, Town Accountant Contract, do you have anything from Barbara? If you could review it down there. So, this was the contract that was reviewed.
Well, we, yeah, there's just a few things. We put in Ms. Gomez rather than just having Ms. Gomez. You know, it just seemed a little harsh.
Well, it was also, it started to say Ms. Gomez down above.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's been changed.
So, this is all the stuff we agreed to. There haven't been any changes.
This is all what we agreed to and was approved by council.
We just need to sign it.
So, we're going to vote in open meeting. So, I, I make a motion that we approve and sign the new contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe it's already been signed by Barbara.
Okay, wow. We're going to have a town accountant.
Yay.
Two seconds.
John did top-notch town accountant. Thank you.
I might just add that, that, you know, it was an executive session, so I'll let it be, but I'd just add, I think there was unanimity amongst this, amongst this board on what a treasurer our town accountant is and we're thrilled to have her for another year.
Well, she absolutely is critical to our financial operations and, right, she, she makes things happen for us financially. All right, so we've done all the updates and discussions. How about correspondence?
Okay. Okay. So, so warrants signed, Eversource 1578, MRI 6,000, Verizon 174, Aukers 1345, John's beautiful whiteboard, can't wait until we start using it. KMP Law 2474. I think the interesting thing there, that's the first time after months of really high legal fees, actually, we've gotten down kind of below budget for a month.
Yay.
It's really good.
I was excited when I opened.
I don't want to jinx us by any means.
Mark, or you might know John, with MRI, is this the first payment or is this the second payment to them?
It's the first payment, isn't it?
Okay.
The six thousand?
Yes.
And that was part of the contract.
Okay, perfect.
This is to the Board of Selectmen from Joy Marble, COA Director. It reads, "Due to increasing communications with both our senior citizens and other agencies and colleagues, we respectfully request a phone line to come directly to our desk. Thank you for your consideration."
I think it makes sense.
Do we, are, are we adding a number when we're adding these phone lines? And how much is that costing? Do you know?
It was about $75 to add Liz.
Per month?
Well, it was $75 for the install and then I'm not sure of the monthly cost of that.
I mean, I'm totally in favor of this. I just know sometimes, depending, there's so many different systems, but sometimes it's 50 or 60 bucks a month.
We ought to have somebody come in and take a look at our system. You know, just figure out, it's, it's, it's a hodgepodge.
It is a hodgepodge and it's amazing how often you're, you're in a five-year contract before you know it and...
I need to, I have to find out what the monthly...
Well, do we pay all the phone, everybody's bills?
It can't be $50 or $60 a month for each one.
Or does, does each department pay their own bill? Or do we pay everybody's phone bill?
We pay everybody and I get the breakdown.
Okay.
But the only one I don't put a warrant in for is Fire Department.
Okay. But they're not in this bill then? Okay.
What about police?
I don't think I get the police number. They're broken down, I would say. I don't think I get, there's either, I'd have to look at each one and how it comes through, because it will list all of the numbers and then it gives me the breakdown.
Okay.
I have to click that little button, see if police are part of that.
I still think we ought to have somebody come in and take a look. I would bet, who's our, who's our provider?
Verizon.
So, I would bet they would have a service that does it for, you know, nothing.
But we could say a bill runs about three, three hundred, three hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, and I would just...
So, I'd be willing to consider this. I'd just like to know what we're getting into.
I agree.
Cost-wise.
How much can it cost to put in a line and what is estimated to be for the monthly bill?
Okay.
And, and there's then that bigger issue of...
But you get phone calls and when she puts her phone call, oh, she ties up.
Okay, okay.
Why don't you call Verizon, too, and ask them if there's a consulting service that would take a look? We don't want to pay anything.
If they would just come in and kind of...
Just come in and take a look at...
Take a look at our system.
How our system works and whether they can make recommendations for improvement.
I mean, are there other plans that we can be on where it's cheaper for all these lines or, I don't know, do they offer any deals?
I have the cheapest, that's not bad.
Yeah.
Because don't they offer like, don't they have like a business-to-business type thing?
It's a business, it's a, it's a definitely, it's a business account, because like when you call up, you get rerouted to a different department.
Okay. Yeah, I just would want to make sure that we're, you know, we have the best plan to save the, or else cost-effective.
It's also very annoying. You call in and, you know, if it goes to voicemail, trying to move across the different, from one department to another, is not easy.
That's not Verizon.
Who's that?
That's who put our phone system in there.
Yeah, but we want them to look at it and make some, just recommendations.
Okay. Because once this line gets put in, I have to call the other people to get it put up onto this board and I don't know.
So, who's the other people?
Who started this phone company? I don't know. I wasn't here then, but it was somebody that dialed in.
Another reason to take a look at it.
I did not sign the contract for them to come.
Okay.
They wanted to charge $100 just to drive here. They wanted to charge $200 to walk in the door and all I wanted to do is change the voicemail. I said, I don't know whose voice that is, who sits it. And it was the man who was...
Did set it up? Okay.
Oh.
All right.
Okay. This is from Chief Borsari, follow-up to the November 6th Selectmen's meeting about emergency preparedness plans. And he kind of lists additional notification means that will be coming up, a lot of good stuff on there.
Yeah, I thought you did a good job.
Yeah. I don't think I need to read the details, just that citizens will be getting a lot more information from, which is great.
Great news.
And this is from Comcast to the Board of Selectmen, many, many pages, a lot of words, essentially saying that December 20th, there'll be a fee increase and on their services, just sort of the nature of the state, of how we all live these days. There's eight pages of very small print of fees in there. This is the Old Colony Planning Council Agenda for the November 29th meeting, which is a couple of days from now. The main thing is Regional Pavement Management Program.
Exciting stuff. I'll be there.
Good for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And there was one more thing. We got an email today from Old, about the Old Colony Route 106 corridor study. I guess this was mainly aimed at the Highway Surveyor and the Police Chief, but the Old Colony Planning Council's looking for any concerns about congestion, high-traffic areas, high accident areas, so they're seeking information on that. And Plumpton Halifax Express, the results of the Halifax Town Meeting, nice picture of Inspirational Rocks, sunrise tomorrow at 6:49. The center pages, the Guys and Dolls theatrical presentation, couple of actually things of some import. There's a note that Plumpton 2017 Street List is available at the Town Clerk's Office for $10. It's actually, albeit you talk of seemingly dry, but it includes the addresses, the occupations, and the years born of all citizens. So, so much for privacy and it's actually fascinating reading. People you thought were young or old and vice versa and, and the cool things they're doing with their days.
It is a great document, very helpful.
It is.
Really is interesting reading.
Year, date of, year, year of birth.
You don't have to put it in, though. And in fact, I, I won't mention who, but there's some people who put in 1707, 1796.
That's a hoot.
Actually, I was at the, this is totally irrelevant, but I was at the doctor's office today with my mother with the orthopedic injury and there's 18 pages to fill out and one of the, and she doesn't hear very well, so I'm screaming at her, "Mom, what's your social security number?"
Oh, gee.
And we get, and we get to occupation for a 93-year-old woman. And I said, "Mom, what's your occupation?" And she thought for a second and said, "Mother!"
Well, that's good.
That's very good.
And then I had one more thing on here. Oh, I, there's a little blurb about brush burning, which will start January 15th in Plumpton, and the Police Chief notes that the process for an obtaining a permit will be available shortly. And with great Thanksgiving, do I report that that completes correspondence.
Fantastic. Okay, any other business?
Yeah. We got the technology grant to add that. And today we got a little note from Sean Cronin, I think, asking us to give a project status update form, which is pretty, which is pretty mundane.
Okay.
So, most of it is Tower. So, I'll meet with Tower tomorrow and just fill out, you know, just ask, how are we using the money and how did it really make us more efficient?
Perfect.
We'll have some, some nice words.
Great.
You giving this to me just as a...
Just for industry.
This is an FYI?
Yep.
FYI.
Now, I wonder, I would think that we would need to do something with the Collins Group, the, the grant we got there, but I don't ever recall seeing something like this, saying, how are you going to use this? And, you know, but I thought that that was part of the grant, that we needed to...
I think we did do something back, Jim, a couple of months ago.
Did we?
I, I don't know. I'm going to have to go back and take a look.
Okay.
I think it was just that, but that brings up a whole new set of things. We've got to make sure when we go through the budget cycle, we have now a forecasting model. We have to make sure that in fact that's used and used effectively, so that it's not just something that sits on the shelf and is brought out once a year, we fill it up and off we go.
Well, right, because it's to be modified, new things are coming in, things that you've done are taken off, so that we're, you know, continuing to address capital issues throughout the, the planning process.
Also, and, yeah, and the operating pieces, you know, are we going to get in trouble a year or two down the line with these things that we're starting to commit to now? And I think that's really going to be important.
Well, right, we just need to maintain it and Barbara...
The fire operating cost is going to be...
Yeah, okay.
Just as a side, I think Barbara had sent this to us.
Yes.
Okay, just so at some point, we may want to discuss it a little further. This was wage and personnel hiring policy.
Oh, yeah, she said she was going to look at it. Did she actually send something?
She did.
Yeah.
All right, I missed that.
It was what the other towns are doing, Halifax, Kingston.
And it's not a big document, it's just a little thing.
So...
Do you want to put it on the agenda for next week to look at?
Sure.
Or is this something that wage and personnel really would need to do and not the Board of Selectmen?
It's really wage and personnel, but...
Maybe we could spiff it up and present something to them that we're already...
I think she sent them a copy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they have it. Yeah, let's not make more work. Why don't, why don't we just ask them to take a look at it?
Right, to create a, approve a hiring policy.
Approve a hiring policy?
Yeah, because they're going to be meeting soon with the budget process.
Right.
Maybe not, you know, this month, but...
We need to help them find a third person. That should be a three-person board, not two. And, you know, what we're going through between the Town Administrator, Assessor, we really need to have better policies around the wage and personnel area.
Yeah, so we need to think about a third person.
Yeah. At one point, I thought Colleen Thompson might be interested, but I don't know if she is anymore.
I'm glad to ask.
Would you reach out to her?
Yep.
Do you want this on the agenda, Connecticut?
No.
No. Okay. And we, I don't believe we can serve on wage and personnel.
I don't, no, I don't think we should either.
I don't think we should.
Yeah.
But, you know, in a pinch, if they needed a, a third person, but I, I mean, they need somebody long-term, not just somebody...
It's actually a big area and it's, there's a lot to learn. That's not an easy one.
No, it isn't.
That board has been understaffed and underthought of for as long as I can remember and it's time, we have two good people on here.
Yep.
We need to, one more and then we start to get more professional with it.
Well, and now we've got Elizabeth, too, to help provide some personnel support for them as well. Okay, all right.
I just have a quick, these came in a little bit later than the agenda had been done, but it's the range permit for the Upland Club. Do I have to have that on the...
When does it expire?
December 31st.
Okay, why don't we put it on next week?
Like I got everything, I got the checks, everything. Do you want it next week?
Yeah, let's put it on the agenda for next week.
We all sat with the alcoholic, the signatures and everything, so that... So that-
They're done.
Okay. Because they still don't have the, they still can't sell beer and wine.
Oh, you're talking about Plumpton Gas?
Yeah.
That's the state, that's not us. We've done everything.
Okay, great.
Every single day.
We'll get documents back from them. But yeah, we've done everything we need to do.
So we're going to have to do inspections on those, right?
We'll have to do the class two and class three inspections. But we, we did the liquor license inspections as well when we were signing those.
Nothing's changed on the, I didn't, no.
Well, we don't even have them in front of us now to do the inspections.
But one of us should walk through. I mean, that was like-
You want to walk through the club for the pistol permit?
For the pistol permit?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm talking about the liquor license part. I know Joe always would walk through each of the establishments.
I think I did it, didn't I? Or did you?
I didn't go to the club last year.
The liquor ones were the, more of the class two because it was how many vehicles and how many-
Right, we had to verify everything.
We did those.
Yeah, we did all those, class two and class three.
The fire department has done their part of all of this.
Okay.
The major ones were the class two.
Okay.
And the scrap metal and the, because it was how many vehicles and where are they being kept and what side of the building? Where this is-
That's just hours of operation, isn't it?
It's really hours of operations, the exit, the-
The number of vehicles too.
For the club?
Oh, no, no.
Well, this is strictly the club's range permit and their liquor license. If I get this done, I can send these out. Next week could be the scrap metal.
You know what? Why don't, why don't I go down? Because I'm not a member.
Well, that's why I wanted to-
I know, that's why you want to go down. So I'll go down.
All right, you go down.
I'll do the pistol permit and I'll do the liquor license inspections.
Get sent a book.
Oh, well, somebody asked, I know, buzz me in first. Okay, thanks, buzz me in. All right.
These will be next week.
Perfect, yeah. Do you want to just give me a copy so I can see what I'm looking for? Okay, perfect. All right. Anything else under there? All right, so we've got the Board of Assessors coming in. So let's quickly buzz through this. The next meeting is 12:04. We're meeting 12:04, 12:11, and 12:18. Will be closed Christmas Day and New Year's Day. Board's goals, do we have something you want to add?
Well, just, I would think we're probably going to have to have a Tuesday meeting or something, one of those weeks. We won't make it three weeks.
And you talked about closing early on 12:22.
At noon time?
At noon.
Okay.
Noon the, on which?
On the last working day before Christmas.
What is that, Thursday?
The Thursday before?
Yeah, and you talked about it before to close. That's a little incentive, a little-
What are those?
Yeah, at a girl, good job.
Okay.
All right. All right, so-
Christmas blessed.
Yeah. All right, Board's goals for coming year. Financial management, we don't really have anything new to report there. You know what I will do is I'm going to follow up to make sure we're all set with the, that grant.
Okay.
To make, that we've completed that. Public safety?
They meet Wednesday night. I'll be there, big meeting. I think probably the going out for bids comes up. Keep your fingers crossed.
Okay.
I hear materials have really escalated, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, with all the-
It's going to be a close call and we really had to downsize quite a bit.
All right, grants. Well, we're working on finishing the annual report for the Green Communities Grant. We got, you're going to, you're doing the IT, wrapping that one up.
The recreation one year.
Yeah, and the recreation one I'm checking on. We did get a grant to do the housing production plan. So we've actually gotten quite a few grants.
That's really impressive.
Well, Lori did a great job. Well, it was Lori and Eric Arbin, Arbideen from, he started first and then she picked it up and ran with it. So yeah, they did a really nice job putting, it's pretty sharp, the, all the graphs she put together and a ton, a ton of information. And some of it was really pretty troubling. The, you know, poverty levels and that, the stats on that was just really eye-opening. All right, volunteerism, anything new there? We were going to try to get organized once Elizabeth came on the board with openings on committees and possible ways to get the word out to help increase volunteerism. But I don't think we've got anything else new to add at this point. Okay, technology.
Something like a list, did Elizabeth have a list to follow up on?
Do you want to put together a list of current openings on committees?
Tara's got that, so why not?
Okay.
Could you circulate that to all of us? Because I haven't, I think the one I have is at least six months old, maybe longer.
So we know what committees are looking for people. Okay, technology.
Mike, excuse me, Michael Rodriguez is coming in to sit with Elizabeth and I tomorrow. Wanted to get her all squared away so she could email and et cetera. And then also maybe to take a look at where we are, just get up to date, so.
Okay.
Progressively.
All right, social media. We were going to talk with Elizabeth about possibly working towards getting us-
Brainwash her into my side.
No, you're not. Into getting a social media presence to help disseminate information in a timely manner. So, I don't know, do you want to work on some ideas?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, I have some ideas and I can-
All right, do you want to talk about it next week?
Sure, that would be great.
Okay, so we'll talk about that next week. Minutes.
Excuse me, ask like an agenda topic.
Yeah, why don't we put it as an agenda topic? And Elizabeth's going to share her ideas on social media.
I also, when do you want to review the parking lot? This was updated?
Can you circulate it to us?
Why don't we put the parking lot up for next week?
Do you want to look at it?
Yeah, and then we'll put it on the agenda too so that everybody sees it.
So you'll send it to us before then, yeah.
And then I just, of what you talked about before, it read that you wanted to maybe send Liz's way.
Okay.
So I just have it in the meeting.
And does that have the lease for, review the lease for the side of the building on there?
Probably not.
If it doesn't, why don't you put it on there?
Yeah.
So it doesn't get lost. And Bree, I've got a parking lot too and I'm not sure if ours are in sync.
Do you want to send me yours?
I'll send you mine. And then you can take a look and make sure that everything's on there. Okay, perfect. All right, minutes. So we've got the 6th and the 13th. I don't think we have the 20th, right?
I just saw the 13th and the 6th.
I saw the 6th and the 13th. I never got the 20th.
That's what we have.
Okay, so we'll hold the 20th for next week.
They're done.
Okay, perfect.
I had a couple typos on each of them, nothing of substance and I can simply pass that down.
Me too, so.
I had, I think, a little bit more. I think mine were on the 13th. All right, so you got it, CPC.
Also want to change this repair to renovation. CPC doesn't do repairs.
Yeah, good, good point.
Okay, so renovation.
And just to give credit where it was due, on the 6th it was John who suggested reviewing the current lease.
Okay.
Oh, don't worry about that.
All right, and then you've got Colleen calling the meeting to order.
Five minutes?
Was that the executive session?
Board of Assessors is asking for five minutes.
Okay, that's perfect.
Is that on the executive session?
It's, yeah, 5:30 on the 13th. That's all right. Thanksgiving feast. I thought there was something else. Good money, BOA, nonprofit. I think that might have been it. It was just the CPS, was CPC. Okay.
I had-
Oh, oh, I know what it was. I never sent the solar proposal to town council because I wanted to kind of let things play out and I thought it was premature, so I never did that.
I had a question of what that was, possible potential violation.
That's why I didn't send it in.
Okay, okay.
Yep. So I just wanted to scratch that and, but everything else looked, oh. And CIP has been submitted to Monica Lamboy. That really wasn't, that was quite a long time ago. But I'm not sure what that even, what that means.
Let's take it off.
Okay.
I think we got to pick it up at another point.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, so making a motion-
I have one little thing.
What do you have?
When you talk about a small demonstration made by JT, I want to make sure what you were talking about. Could have been a big difference.
Oh my gosh. All right, so I'll make a motion.
I need all of your minutes, so I think all you changes-
All right, make a motion to accept the minutes of November 6th as amended.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Make a motion to accept the minutes of November 13th as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so we've got those two and we'll hold the 20th till next week. You want to do a quick rant and rave? So we're done as soon as the, do you want to start, John? Actually, do you want to start since he's talking to Bree?
Sure. So this is actually a repeat a few weeks ago, but it's all about getting Elizabeth up to speed. So a few weeks ago, the Massachusetts Municipal Association had their regional meeting and there were bumper stickers there that read, "Local governments build strong communities," which is the perfect antidote for those of us frustrated. What's happening on the Washington level is that we actually have the opportunity to get things done and we're thrilled to now have you help us get things done. But there's your official bumper sticker.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you.
All right, and in the theme of green communities and recycling, I'll do what I talked about last week too. And that was being thankful to the town for supporting, bringing Elizabeth on board so that we can work efficiently and effectively to help make our residents' lives better. I mean, that's what we're here to do, is to try to, to help people. And so I think that we're, we're definitely heading in the right direction.
Good. My rave is for, we've talked about the town administrator standing committee. I thought I'd just call them up by name so people know. The committee was composed of Barbara Gomez, Colleen Thompson, Pat Dillon, Susan Nosoff, Marilyn Brown, Nate Sides, and Alan Wheelock. And they did a great job.
Top-notch. A very good committee and yeah, they did a great job. Absolutely. All right, so that is everything that we've got on our agenda. We're just waiting for the Board of Assessors. And you said they'll be down here?
Yeah, they said five minutes. You know, recess for a couple of minutes.
Yeah, why don't we take a brief recess? And we'll come back to have our tax classification hearing. And then, if no other business comes before the board, we'll adjourn. We are having our tax classification hearing. So why don't we have Mark read the hearing notice first?
Okay, a public hearing on tax classification will be held Monday, November 27, 2017 at 7:00 p.m. in the selectmen's meeting room at the townhouse. This is, by the way, the ad in, and the notification in the Plumpton Halifax Gazette. Allocating the local property tax levy among the five property classes for fiscal year 2018 will be discussed. A public hearing prior to the local determination of the levy percentages is one of the requirements of legislation relating to property tax classification. The legislation also vests the local policy decision regarding the shift of property tax burden from one class to another exclusively with the Board of Selectmen. The hearing will give taxpayers, taxpayers an opportunity to present their views as to whether residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property tax should all be taxed at the same or different rates. The Board of Assessors will provide the supporting data relevant to the fiscal effects of available alternatives. Selectmen will also be required to vote on the small commercial exemption. Such an option, if voted, would in effect reduce the property tax on properties occupied by small businesses and shift those taxes onto other commercial and industrial properties. After the hearing, the assessors will submit the recap sheet to the Department of Revenue for approval of the tax rate. And I think this appeared, this ad appeared in November 20, 17th and 24th, 2017 newspaper.
Perfect.
I'm sorry, what dates again were?
17th and 24th.
Okay, so we're now officially in the tax classification hearing.
The Board of Assessors would like to recommend a vote that the residential rate remain at one, unchanged, and no exemption given to small business or open space.
Is that what we've done in the past?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that we leave the, what did you say, the classification at one?
The residential factor at one.
The residential factor at one.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
So the recap sheet, are we going to make that date? I understand it has to be done no later than December 15th if the tax bill is going to go out February 1st.
Are we done with everything for the tax classification hearing first?
Yep.
Okay. Do we, so just to be clear to everyone, there will not, where everyone's business, residential, everyone will be at the same rate. We're continuing to do that as we have in the past. There unfortunately is no one here to ask any questions. Do you have any questions about the tax classification?
No, just one comment. At the last Massachusetts Selectmen's Association meeting, there was some comment that when commercial property is 20% of the assessed value is the time that maybe you start thinking about shifting some of the responsibility. We're not near that.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, so then why don't we make a motion to close the tax classification hearing? Because we're all done, right? Okay, all right, I'll make a motion to close the tax classification hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, now do I ask a question?
Yeah, sorry. So just worried about-
Working on, we still have documents due to them and we're getting help to complete them. I don't have a date one way or the other for you yet. It would just depend on me, I would, I would just do it. But we're waiting kind of on everything to fall into place as far as getting help as well and locating some documents, so. And as well as hearing back from the DOR, they're a little bit-
Is there any reason that we should be concerned about hitting that date? That's, that's-
Yeah, I think so.
What about the two people? Are we able to use either one? Does it make sense?
Yeah, I think having help from Steve would definitely make sense.
Okay, okay. Has anybody reached out to him?
I think Allison has, or Colleen. I haven't touched base with them yet, but we're basically got this out of the way and we have the LA four. It's kind of what we were looking for this week, so.
Okay, great.
Well aware of the date.
Yeah, yes. Nancy time.
Yep, and still trying to get through to the DOR logins. I believe Barbara is able to get into some stuff from what I've heard. But as an office, we have not been able to get in. So, we're having some password issues. We've reached out to the DOR, we haven't heard back.
Yeah, ask Barbara, because there's two people that, one is Sean Cronin.
Okay. Just out to Jared, I believe.
Yeah, well, he's down in the system, but.
Okay.
And then below him is a fellow named Zach Blake who is head of technical services. Barbara knows him very well. They've been very good to us in terms of stuff. I'm sure they would help you, they'd find somebody who knew and would-
Yeah, so those, the remaining documents that are in the DOR's website that we need to kind of complete and submit online and then get to Barbara and Colleen.
Yeah, I'm sure Barbara can help you and if I can help-
Yes.
All the forms from this point through this gateway.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Online environment, so.
We'll try to update you guys by Wednesday morning on where we are with the password.
Great.
Yeah, let us know what we can do to help.
Yeah, we sure will.
December, oh. The tax bills need to go out 30 days before they do, so.
I think February 1st is the day that, sort of the drop dead date for them to go out.
But there's a lot of other things that have to happen first.
When do we have to have this submitted to?
We have a lot of things to do.
The DOR.
Yeah, there's a-
Fifteenth.
By the 15th, right, of December, okay.
But that's all in there. Baileywick.
They're capable hands.
Yeah, I'm doing this from later.
Yeah, I think Steve has offered, we should-
Absolutely, take him up on it.
And I don't know the man, but everybody talks highly of him.
Yeah, I worked with him.
Oh, you did, okay, great, okay, great.
He had a contact at the DOR that kind of told me where we were with the process. So I don't know if we have like an assigned person.
Jared and I was kind of looking where are we, like within the office. So I think if we all kind of put our heads together and use our, we could probably get a response from somebody that I know.
Yeah, and I know Steve would help out short term. He said he would, so you just have to give him a call and-
Yeah, we're all on there.
Perfect, great, well, thank you so much for coming in.
One other thing, did Ethan have a baby?
He must have, I don't know.
I haven't heard.
I haven't heard anything.
All right, well, let us know, let us know.
Oh, I did see a baby carrier outside the trunk of his vehicle.
Okay. That's a good hint.
Very good. All right, anything else for tonight?
No, I'm taking a nap over here, sorry.
Okay, all right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Thanks again.
Good night.
Good night.
Aye.